We're going to call the meeting to order.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Bills, Mr. Foley, Mr. Muncy?
Here.
Ms. Pritchett?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
So, filling in for our normal vice chair and chair. So I think what we're going to do today is we're going to, we have some old business or at least some minutes to approve. And then we have some housekeeping items to take care of since our first meeting of the year. And then we have some new business, which is this one application. So... Oh, sorry. Well, the chair will administer oath to members of the public who wish to speak on the one agenda item that we have for the evening. We'll call the agenda item and ask for staff to present the case. The chair will ask the applicant if they would like to add anything to what staff presented. The chair will ask, then ask commission members if they have any questions of the staff or the applicant. The chair will ask for a motion and a second to open the floor to public comments. Second, the secretary will perform a roll call for the vote. The chair will explain the public comment rules. Each speaker will have three minutes to make comments. If your comment has been made by previous speaker, please do not replicate the comments. Director comes to the planning commission and not directly to the applicant. The applicant will have a chance to respond to the comments received at the end. Once the floor has been closed, a public comment, no additional comments can be made. Then the chair will ask for any public comment in favor or against the application. The chair will ask staff if any comments were provided prior to the meeting. The chair will ask for a motion and a second to close the floor to public comments. We'll perform another roll call vote. Then the chair will ask the applicant if they have anything to rebut public comments. The chair will ask if there are any further discussion among the commission members. The chair will ask for a motion and a second to recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval of the applicant's request. Secretary will then perform another roll call vote. And planning commission members can explain their decision at that time. So, we already did the roll call, explained the administer, the, so we need to administer oath to members of the public who wish to speak on the application. Does anybody wish to speak? Okay, stand up. And... Since all testimony for the board is sworn, all persons wishing to speak are required to stand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that the testimony that you may give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God, if you agree, say I do. First item is the minutes of the previous meeting, which... December 16th, 2024. I think we have sufficient quorum to approve them. So, does anybody wish to make a motion to approve the December 16th, 2024 meeting minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes for the December 16th, 2024 meeting.
Motion and a second.
Roll call?
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay. So, we just need to acknowledge receipt and understanding the rules of procedure for the City of Clayton Planning Commission, which I believe were emailed to us. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the procedural rules?
I move, I move that we approve the procedural rules for this meeting.
A second.
I think we need a roll call, or can we?
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Next item, approval of the 2025 planning commission schedule. Motion and a second?
Motion for, call for the second.
I second.
Roll call?
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to appoint a chair. And in true fashion, because he's not here, Mr. Foley, I think I'll nominate Mr. Foley to be the chair of the planning commission for 2025. Anybody second?
I second.
And...
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And there's a, anyone have a motion for appointment of the vice chair?
I move that we appoint Mr. Muncy as vice chair.
A second.
Mr. Muncy?
I think I have to abstain, right?
No, you actually get a vote for yourself.
Ooh. Yeah, I'll go ahead and go for it.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
It's only because Bill doesn't, Billis doesn't want it, so... And then we'll, we have a motion to appoint Barbara Si, oh my gosh, Sim as clerk of council. Do we have a motion for that?
I move that we appoint Barbara Sim as the clerk of council, I mean, commission secretary.
Yeah, it's, yeah, of the commission, not council.
Okay, commission secretary.
I'll second.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I don't think I've ever seen it spelled out before. Never paid attention. We have no old business, so we're already on to the new business. Application PC 2501, a request for a preliminary subdivision plan for the extension of Hunter's Path subdivision. A proposed residential subdivision. The request was made by DDC Management LLC as the applicant.
Good evening. This is case number PC 25-01, parcel M60032070023, owned by Lagos Properties Incorporated, and applied for by DDC Management LLC. And this is a request for preliminary development plan. Introduction to the application. The preliminary subdivision application was received February 28th, 2025. There are no proposed zoning district changes from the current RSD zoning classification. The proposed preliminary development plan for a single-family residential subdivision. The applicant is Ross Benfelt on behalf of DDC Management LLC. The property owner is Lagos Properties. The property currently contains 37.098 acres, and there are no structures on the property presently. Public notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property on March 10th, 2025. Public notice was printed in the Eaton Register Herald on March 12th, 2025. The location of the subject property is near the intersection of Westbrook Road and Union Road. This is a general location of where the property is at. Kind of through the middle of the screen is Westbrook Road. The subject property is in the middle. It's that darker brown area. Everywhere gray is not the City of Clayton. To the north is Inglewood, and to the south is Trotwood. This is the surrounding zoning. Again, everything gray is Inglewood or Trotwood. The subject property is in the middle, and it's currently zoned RSD. We have a PDD to the right and CMX further to the east. And everything red is properties within 300 feet of the subject property. This is the specific location. This imagery is from 2022. And again, the subject property is highlighted in this teal color. The preliminary development plan overview. This is the overall site plan. It kind of shows the layout of where the streets are at and where the lots will be at, and where the open spaces will be, and the basins. This is another preliminary development plan overview. This is the utility plans. And a third preliminary development plan overview. This would be the drainage plans. Analysis of the request. Zoning classification. Again, the current zoning of the subject property is RSD or residential single-unit district. RSD zoning district outright permits 11 certain uses and conditionally permits 14 other certain uses. The proposed zoning of the subject property is to remain RSD or residential single-unit district. The proposed subdivision is not within the Clayton Improvement District Number One overlay, and the proposed subdivision is not within the Special Area One overlay. The summary of Hunter's Path Extension proposes a construction of 97 single-family homes, proposes 11.06 acres or 29.4% of open space, proposes 2.61 units per acre, proposes two access points. One is an entrance on Westbrook Road, and one is an extension of Falls Road. It proposes water and sewer service tie-ins from existing facilities. New infrastructure includes streets, sidewalks, lighting, and a multi-use path along Westbrook Road. The neighborhood amenities include open space and two basins that have passive open space around them. Looking at Plan Clayton, this area is proposed as single-family homes. It didn't outline a specific neighborhood here. And again, just kind of zoomed into this area. The future land use plan indicates the intent of this area to be single-family homes, and that says in Plan Clayton, single-family homes are typically one or two stories, sitting on lots of approximately 50 to 80 foot wide and 100 to 130 feet deep. In new development, they will have garages off the alley, often with small apartments above. This developer is not proposing, or the applicant is not proposing apartments above garages with this, so it's a less intense land use. Analysis of the request. Code guidance, chapter 1111.11, residential single-unit district or RSD. This chapter offers guidance in respect to desired development patterns, uses, and development standards. And then also chapter 1161 subdivisions. This chapter offers guidance in respect to design and development standards for any proposed major subdivision as a whole. Potential next steps. After planning commission makes a recommendation to city council, city council will hold a public hearing and make a final determination on the proposed preliminary development plan. If approved by city council, the applicant will then be able to submit final development plans. Each final development plan requires a public hearing both, with both planning commission and city council. Final development plan and plat submission requires certain additional information not included with the preliminary plan, namely a completed traffic study, which will consider the impact of the proposed development on area roads, and will make recommendations on road improvements to address such impacts, and a development plan set, which will include details on utilities, grading, stormwater, and drainage, building architecture, and landscaping. Staff recommendation. After evaluating the applicant's request, staff recommends the planning commission make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary subdivision plan with the following to be provided with the final subdivision plan, in addition to all the requirements specified in the planning and zoning code. And that condition is that all comments from Clayton staff, Clayton Planning Department, and Clayton Engineering Department are addressed to Clayton Planning Commission's satisfaction.
I believe, um... Does anybody have any questions for zoning administrator? So then, with no questions for staff, does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Is the applicant going to make a presentation? Okay.
Yeah, come on up, just to clarify a couple things for me.
My name is Ross with DDC Management, and I appreciate you guys being here tonight. We also were the developer of the original Hunter's Path next door. So this would be an extension of that existing subdivision. Arbor Homes was our building partner in that particular project, and they would be following us into this additional three, and third and fourth phase, if approved as well. And again, I'll be here to answer any questions you have, as well as folks in attendance.
What's the status of the first phase, or the original Hunter's Path development? Are we 100% over there, or how many lots are still available?
Arbor's had a lot of success building and selling homes, and that's part of the reason that we're ultimately looking to add on to that subdivision. We've had good opportunity here in the City of Clayton, and we want to continue that.
Was this the original plan to, like, see how things went with the first phase, maybe try the second phase?
It really wasn't, mainly just because we didn't have contact with the current owner, Lagos Properties. However, things have changed in the last couple years since we started the first piece of Hunter's Path. And we got to talking to Lagos Properties, and they were in a different position where they're willing to, to sell. So if anything, the success of what he saw next door led to the opportunity.
I don't know if I noticed in the information we've been provided, but I did see that Inglewood was not on board with the street continuation.
That's correct. Yeah, continuing the street connection.
So what is the plan for, you know, do you have a second, secondary plan?
No, as shown, we'd have singular access coming out to Westbrook for the lots to the west side of the project. And the lots on the eastern side of the project would connect via Falls, Falls Road into the existing Hunter's Path subdivision.
So we're just, the street would just end back there instead of extending?
That's correct. So, the way it's drawn on the outline, you can even see it above. There's what we consider loosely an elbow. The elbow kind of continues our street network. And then the backs of lots would actually back up to where the City of Inglewood's road would stop. So you are correct. Inglewood Street would just abruptly stop. Yep.
So that does look like it. I'm all for new development. Because we do have older homes in the city, and I think we do need new development. But that does look like, um, there's a development on the left, there's a development on the right, and then you're putting the nearly 100 homes in between, correct? Does look like quite a bit of homes, so...
Okay. I feel, you know, right now we, we meet that RSD zoning requirement. We do have a significant amount of open space in between what you may refer to as the east and the west portions of the project. So I fit, I feel it fits the use well for what it's already been zoned to be.
You know what the percentage of coverage is, the percentage of this lot that's being developed, do you know off the top of your head?
For this particular parcel?
The development versus the open space?
Yeah, understood. So, you know, the open space area is labeled as, and Ellen's presentation did a nice job, but it should be right around 29% of this existing parcel is left as open space and not lots. To put that into perspective, just a little bit more, the acreage for that open space is, you know, approximately 11 acres, whereas the overall total for the parcel is 37. So almost, almost third. And as Ellen, as Ellen already mentioned, we're planning on doing a traffic study as part of this project. The MOU, the rules of what that traffic assessment would look like is currently with City of Clayton Engineering staff for approval. And, and once they do that, we'll, we'll move forward with doing that analysis.
Has there been any discussion about, I don't think you could add another curb cut on Westbrook? Like, we're probably too close to Redwood, there's that Redwood Drive.
I think that would probably be the correct assessment. Yeah.
That it? We can call you back up at the end?
Yep, I'll be here. Thank you.
I'll ask for a motion in a second to open the floor to public comment.
I move that we open the floor to public comment.
A second.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yeah, three minutes. Names come up. I think we have a sign-in sheet that we usually use. But state your name, state your address. Three minutes. Try not to repeat a comment that's already been made. I know that's difficult. First one up is William. Anybody?
Um, is it mine? I'm William Sider, 592 Mount Royal Drive. How do I want to say this? In my perfect world, this wouldn't be happening at all, but we don't live there, so we'll move on. The main thing is, if we're doing this, let's do it right. Make sure that first water runoff is handled properly with enough storm sewers, basin capacity. Make sure the existing creek can handle all the new water that's going to come into it, and not back up into our detention pond off of Mount Royal Drive. And, um, and that the creek is cleared of debris. That used to be a job my wife and I voluntarily did. We'd run down the creek and clear out all the trees that were blocking the flow. We don't do that anymore. It's not our property. Two, on the ponds, we highly recommend detention ponds, not retention ponds, because they have more capacity. We're getting a lot more rain than we ever used to, and I think all the capacity you can get is advisable. Also, I think detention ponds are safer. You don't have to worry about kids drowning in the water, unless they're full of rainwater. So, and the last thing is, they don't attract geese. And we've already seen all kinds of evidence of geese and what they leave behind in the new Arbor development. The other thing is, previously, the developer in the first section said they would leave the tree line, and of course, we'd like that to happen. But if they do, they need to clear out all the dead trees and the debris that's in there. There is, uh, existing debris left from tornado damage, high winds, and dead ash trees all through that, that tree line. And in my perfect world, street lights would be kept to a minimum. We don't have any street lights on Mount Royal right now, and I'd hate to see that thing light up our backyard unnecessarily. So if you could keep them minimal or use lights that they, that are referred to as dark sky friendly. And you mentioned access to the, the parcel, and I kind of like the way you have it, but you know, my only concern is if the access will be below some of the hills or the crests of the road of Westbrook. You know, that makes looking to the right as you come out kind of precarious if you're trying to get out. So I don't know if there's a problem with the other entrance at the existing Arbor Homes, but those are things I want to have considered, and that's really all I have.
I'm going to ask you a question.
Yeah.
When you say creek, where's this creek at? This, this creek runs through, if you...
Watch that step there, Brian.
This is, there's your creek. It runs all the way from, from west, the creek runs all the way from Westbrook northward to our detention pond on Mount Royal. And that's like the main detention pond for the whole plat.
There's other detention ponds that drain into it.
Yeah, and there's other ones that drain into the one. Yeah, and there's other ones that drain into the one. I think that's lots 59, 60 and 61 on their plans.
Is there a water?
It's just, it's the tree.
Yeah, there's always water in it. And in our detention pond, it has a concrete curb that runs down the middle. There's always a little bit of water there. And as time has gone on, there's a couple places in that detention pond that are always soggy.
You know who maintains the detention pond on you guys? Well, who's, who's supposed to maintain it?
There was a homeowners association many, many years ago, but it's, you know.
Defunct.
So residents take care of the detention pond, mowing it, cutting trees, cleaning out debris, wiping that bushes, we do it ourselves.
Yeah, and the pipe, the corrugated plastic pipe that empties that detention pond is actually in need of some maintenance and we're not equipped to do that. That's all I have.
Okay, Ralph and Donna Evans, indoor.
My name is Ralph Evans. I've been at. What's that? I was going to give that to you. 6022 Mount Royal Drive, the last household, Mount Royal. We have a lot of water come down through the bean field across my property. 15 feet wide, six inches deep on a good storm and then it goes that little jog right there on the very tip of that, that's my house. That's 16 feet by 96. And I would like to maybe ask if I could maybe take care of that. And I'll make some kind of arrangements to take care of that. That way the landowner on 61 doesn't have to have that 15 by 96 feet responsibility. I, I've been maintaining that for 31 years. I've cut ash trees out of it. When the tornado came down, it blew a large hackberry tree, a triple, a triple trunk hackberry tree over into the bean field. I cut all that up. I hired a farmer to come in, dig the roots out and it wasn't on my property. I cleaned it all up because we lived there. My neighbor and I, we took care of it. And we cut a lot of big limbs out of their trees that the tornado tore up. You know, we're, you know, we like to take care of our neighbors and that's what we do. We've been doing it for 31 years. I was the second house in Sterling Woods Development there. I've been there for, since 94. So, and the, we have a retention pond that dumps over into Inglewood. It goes through Dreys' house and my house into Inglewood and they're supposed to be putting a, the contractor says he's going to put a storm sewer, a big thing in there to all that water. Whether he does, I don't know. I mean, they'll tell you anything he wants you to hear. But we're, it's four inches deep right now over there. If you, if you go in my backyard, which several of my neighbors have seen it, it's just water's just sitting there. And there's those little squiggly lines going left to right. What are those?
That's the direction of the water.
Direction of the water? Well, there's no squiggly lines going this way. They're all coming this way. So am I going to get dumped on water from the development? Are they going to cut the hill down? It's 942 feet above sea level and I'm at 930 feet above sea level. There's a 12 foot drop from the top of the hill to my house. And when it rains, buddy, you could float a boat in that. It's bad. So I just don't want this development to dump, dump any excess more water onto me. And our, our pond, like I said, it runs over into Inglewood. And what the, what the, what the development did in Inglewood was they covered the creek up when they built all the houses and I called Clayton, they came out and says you can't cover the creek up, so they brought a track hoe in and dug a line from that water because it was this deep for weeks because they covered the creek up. And then they put a big 15, he put a small 15 inch tile to run all that water. The pond coming off my property is 15 inches and they put a 15 inch tile over there and I got two sources of water going into a 15 inch pipe and it looks like a vortex when it rains a lot. So we, I got, we got a lot of problems down there. I just don't want the developer to, to, you know, and I wouldn't, I'm really interested in that little section there so I could put a pipe. If I have to, I could put a drainage pipe through there or we can do it together, whatever, and cover it up and that way we can get all that water out of there. And also the ash trees, the ash trees is a problem down through there. I've cut down four or five on, on their property. What didn't fall down, but half of it fell down. I didn't want the kids getting hurt, so I went over there and cut them up, put them in my wood pile. I'm just trying to be a good neighbor. That's all I got.
We appreciate you doing that, sir.
And Donna? Andy? This is Andy. Oh, sorry. Paul? No. Joe's, Joe Sider.
Joe Sider, Joe Sider, 5902 Mount Royal Drive, Clayton. He mentioned the retention pond. One thing I noticed on the plan is this one retention pond that you want to put in is very close to the, well, the back of the, the houses over here. And I don't think that neighbors would like that. Plus I, I feel that it should be a detention pond, like my husband said, rather than a retention pond. Many times we've had our detention pond on Mount Royal Drive completely fill up and then it empties out into the creek. And another thing, I assume that the detention, the retention ponds are going to empty into the creek. There's nothing been said about that. It looks on the plan that it's, that they got storm sewers that are leak, that are going into the retention pond and it's emptying out into the creek. But it doesn't really say on the, on the plans, it's a creek. We know the, how it is, so that's kind of what we thought it would be. And then I noticed on the, on our, we're on lot 57. I noticed there's, that's where the cul-de-sac is, is at the end of this, right here on this right side. You see the cul-de-sac at the end? There's no, doesn't look like there's any storm sewer that's going to be down there. It looks like it's just going to be what they call swales. They're using swales with the squiggly lines. I think we need a storm sewer down there because it seems to be always wet. Like right now, you can't walk behind our tree line where the, the land, the farmland begins because you're just going to sink. It's just real mud, a lot of mud. And like I said, it doesn't see where, they haven't really said in their plans that they're going to, they're emptying their retention ponds into the ponds. Let's see. The tree lines, as my husband mentioned, and also the creek, they're, we've cut many trees out of our tree line, probably six to seven oak, I mean, not oak, ash. And we maintain that, we have maintained that property behind our house for, we have even removed all the honeysuckle. So, and like he said, all the trees and debris and both the tree line and the creek need to be removed. And then there's a wetlands on lot number 14. It looks like they're building on top of the wetland. It sounds that they says, says it's going to be mitigated. I'd like to know how they're going to mitigate it and I don't think I would want to be the property owner on 14. And then the, I don't know about the open space, if they're going to have any play, playgrounds for the kids like they did in the other development, but I kind of laugh. There's two swings and one little jungle gym for 125 homes. And I don't call, I don't think that's a very good play, playground for that many homes. I think that's about it, but let me look at my notes real fast. One other thing is about the retention ponds and maintaining them with an HOA. We had an HOA in our development many, many years ago and it fell apart. So now the residents are maintaining the detention ponds. So just to let you know that, that could fall apart someday and then, you know, it could fall back on the residents, so.
Anthony Mahone, 6265 Fall Gold Drive. So we back up to the subject property is going to be the top right part of this map. So my wife and I moved to Arbor Homes in, in June in Hunter's Path and my concern is two, well, there's two or three things, but the first thing I have is I want to ensure that the, we were promised when we came in here that the tree line was going to stay. My concern is, is my, and the reason why my wife and I chose the, the lot that we did was because we were backing up to a tree line. So my number one concern is that. Number two, we also do have a bunch of dead trees in there that, that I'm assuming the Hunter's Path and the builders did not take care of as far as, you know, previous tornado damage, things like that on the backside of my property. Third is going to be, there is, there is, they're, they're using a lot of natural drainage. So Arbor Homes and in particular this builder, they're using a lot of natural drainage for issues. My property sets as the third house in from the old development on Fall Gold, so I'm the third house in on the right. And we, we set probably, I would say five to six feet lower than the, the first property in. So as they're going down, they're stepping down, they're stepping down and I'm getting all the rainwater from each. And it's, it's basically the, the natural drainage that they're using is not working, whatever happened as far as like the actual build, build site. So it's supposed to be, they're supposed to be sending it off to the rear, they're supposed to be sending it off to the front. Some houses have that luxury, some other, other houses do not. What's going on with me currently in the rear is if you go to the backside of my property next to the tree line, I have probably, you could put a boat in the back. This summer, when the mosquitoes get here, we're going to have, we're going to have issues. So, and I can just tell you, there's other houses throughout the community that are exactly like mine. So I want to, I want to bring that to the, the commission's attention and that's, that's what I have for today.
Are you talking about lot 32 on here? Thirty?
So I would be in, it's not on there, but I live.
It's not on that one?
So I live adjacent to probably lot nine or eight on this.
Okay.
On this map. So I live on the right side of that.
Gotcha.
So along that right barrier line for the property line, there is, that's where the tree line is and it's a, you know, I'm assuming it's probably 30 feet, 40 feet wide. I don't, I'm not completely sure on that. You guys would probably know, but, but yeah, so there is some, some drainage issues. Thanks.
Thomas? Tanya?
Hi, my name's Tanya Sights, 3027 Falls Road in Hunter's Path. Our concerns are we bought this lot in July of 2023 and we were told by Arbor Homes that the land beside us would not be developed. We paid a lot premium for the end of a dead end street and we paid a lot premium for a semi wooded, the tree line. So we feel like we are getting screwed. We paid extra for this particular lot for those reasons. So we do not want to see the street go through. I know the neighbors across from us sent a letter in as well. They also paid a lot premium to be at the dead end street. We're also concerned about drainage. I reached out to Arbor last summer about drainage issues between our properties that's supposed to go back to the pond and drain and we were having a giant area just filled with water. Arbor told us it was the HOA's responsibility. HOA told us it was the developer's responsibility. Mr. Ross actually came out and spoke with me and told me that it would be fixed in two weeks and that was last November. It was just recently was fixed after we reached out again to Arbor Homes, HOA, and threatened to call the city about the drainage issues. We currently have standing water at the end of our street as well. It's just been, our whole build process also was a horror. I do not recommend that Arbor Homes build another development. It was horrible. So if you are going to develop this land, I ask that you keep the tree line and I also ask that you do not let Arbor Homes. If you go to the Arbor Homes Facebook page and look at the complaints from this developer, it's ridiculous. It's so bad, we almost gave up $15,000 and backed out at the last minute. But they, Arbor finally came in and fixed all of our issues. We also worry about as this is developed again with Arbor Homes, the trash in the area from the builders has been horrible. Trash in the ponds, trash in the neighboring fields, trash on the streets. It's been terrible. So the builders are not keeping our area clean. I think that is it for what I have. I ask you to consider those things.
I have a question for you. Did you have a question? You said that they came in and fixed your issue in the backyard? How was that done?
I'm sorry?
What? How did they do that? How was it?
So they came in and actually made the, the land sort of go like this and go down to the pond, the way it's supposed to go. Yeah.
Debbie?
My name is Debbie Cook. I live at 5892 Mount Royal Drive. And my concern is, has thought been given basically to bringing all of these new homes into our area? And the drain on the schools, restaurants? We have no good restaurants in our area. We're sending all of Clayton, Inglewood, we're sending them to Miller Lane and other places where if we had good restaurants, we could bring people into our area. I'm worried about the children's education, the number of children in classrooms, transportation. Just has a lot of thought been given to the drain on our community, bringing in a lot of new people? Traffic, that's my big concern. So I hope that you all take that into consideration. We've been a rural community. We get along fine, but now we have a lot more traffic, a lot more people. And I worry about where are we going for food and things like that? Dollar trees and things like that, we have plenty, but I'm looking for main things, so.
Bonnie?
Hi, I'm Bonnie K. I live at 5912 Mount Royal and I'm the one that takes care of the, what's it called?
Detention pond.
Detention pond. I always, I call it a ravine. What do I know? I'm from Virginia. I've been mowing it for about 22, 23 years. I've gone through three riding mowers. It drops off, you have to drop down on a mower and it's kind of scary at times. This detention pond started out being the junkyard for all the building, bricks, you name it, rocks, whatever the garbage was from when they built all these houses on Mount Royal Drive, they all ended up in this area. Well, then according to my neighbors, they didn't clean it up until they called, what is it, seven on your side or two on your, whatever.
The deep pond had water in it and the wooden, the wooden, the drain was clogged. So we had to turn the two to get them, the builder, to empty and fix it right, basically.
Yeah. And when they put the big storm sewer opening in at the street, they didn't put a collar around it, I'm constantly chasing kids out of that storm sewer. They go in there to play hide and seek, they go in there to start fires. We get all the trash and debris from the neighborhood. I can't tell you how many liquor bottles, soda bottles, cups, you name it, gets floated into that detention pond. And here I am on a mower and I gotta either try to reach down and grab it, stop, get off, pick it up, dah 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 dah. My, my neighbors, as one of them has said, that they helped me clean all this stuff up. We cut back the bushes, the trees. When the tornado went through there, you can't, you wouldn't believe how many trees are either down already, three quarters of the way down, a quarter of the way down and they're ash trees. Kids in the neighborhood, what do kids love to do? They love to go in the woods. They build forts. They just do kid stuff in the woods. I'm constantly chasing them out because it's not safe. These trees, just the other day, one of them fell. These trees, just the other day, one of them fell. That's been up there since the tornado, but it was about a quarter of the way down. It's finally fallen. When I first moved here in the year 2000, I took my youngest child to Northmore Elementary School. It'd been raining all night. The detention pond was three quarters of the way full. And I thought, oh my goodness, where did I move to? I took him to Northmore Elementary, dropped him off, came back, the water was gone. I was like, whoa, like someone pulled the, you know, bathtub drain. When I finally started meeting people, I found out, well, they had put a drain tile system into the fields. So when the water gets up so high, it opens up these drain tiles and the water just goes through. Now the water takes longer because what our kids again like to do, they like to go out there and they like to dam up the creek. They like to do all sorts of things that they shouldn't be doing. They throw big rocks into the tunnel so that it takes the water, can't get around it. That creates havoc on me when I'm trying to mow it. But if you build on top of these drain tiles, what's the answer with these drain tiles? Are they going to be just dug up and disappeared? Because if so, I've already lost probably ten feet of my side yard. When I moved there, if my house was here, my side yard went straight out and then it sloped down. Now my yard is slanted like this, and it's gone down. I'm losing my side yard. There was a homeowner's association, which we were not in. We were in the old part, we were grandfathered in. They would never do anything to help us. And then they left, somebody else picked it up. It's gone through like, what, three or four different people with this homeowner's association? They finally went defunct. Okay. So I've got no help with my yard. And if, if that drain tile system goes away out there in that field, I'm going to have big problems. And like Joe said, the end tunnel is just a plastic piece of pipe that goes out into the creek. That thing's ripped, it's torn. We've tried to do what we can do, reshape it and make it so it works. It's not working too well.
Out of fairness, it's time.
So that's, one of my major concerns is the drainage.
All right. Thank you. Tiana Strickland.
Tiana Strickland, 6261 Fall Gold Drive. I am directionally challenged, so I don't know what that map is really saying. But I live a couple doors down from a couple of the other new neighbors. And I, just to piggyback, there is trash and debris everywhere that they did not clean up. They don't work clean. Construction works disrespectfully monopolizing the streets. I have no idea how they could possibly start to build another neighborhood without infringing on the existing neighbors that live there. I don't even know how the Falls Road people would be able to get in and out of there because their equipment right now monopolizes half of the streets that they're currently in our little three, street development working on. So that, and also, I don't think that they graded like the property line back there by the trees very well. It doesn't look very good. I've asked about it a few times, and it just seems like they selectively pick the lots that they want to fix and make look better, and mine was not one of them. I also paid a premium. I do not want to see that money forgone. I'm working hard, and I'm not giving away anything for free. So that being said, I just feel like it would also be a danger. I don't know how they could get out onto Westbrook Road and even see without adding a light to come out right there. There's no other, it's already more congested going back through the neighborhood by Mount Royal. So, that's it. Thank you.
Ryan. So I believe that's it for public comment. Do we have a motion to close the floor for public comment?
I move that we close the floor to public comment.
I'll second.
Mr. Muncie?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I guess I'll start off, I have a couple questions. Can you explain the detention versus retention pond? And kind of why, I guess why you guys chose what you have so far?
So like, what was, correct, I can't speak to subdivision to the north of us, why it was designed as a detention pond versus what we have designed as a retention pond. But they are correct in that their detention pond does outlet into the creek that kind of splits our project down the middle. One of the questions was in regards to how our ponds are going to outlet. And you are correct, they're going to outlet into that existing creek.
So are you going to widen and dredge it?
No, we don't have plans to. It's a protected waterway as well. So to do something like that, wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowed.
Right now, right now, the floor is closed to public comment. Right now, the floor is closed to public comment, so.
And to speak to the amount of water that'd be going into that creek, it's going to be, it's going to be less. Ultimately, the water from our subdivision streets is going to route through the storm drains, like you guys already know. It's going to collect inside of these retention basins, and then it gets released at a much reduced rate. You know, whereas today, when we have a significant rainfall event, that water just rushes off all at one time. Granted, it's going to take three years, four years to get all these lots built, but once that occurs, everything gets collected in those retention basins and is released basically at such a reduced rate, it ends up coming out through an orifice hole that typically on most ponds is storm water designs, is somewhere in the ballpark of an inch and a half. So, you know, you get these massive storms, the ponds will surge and fill, and then it releases at a very reduced rate until it gets down to that stagnant water level. The ponds inside of existing Hunter's Path function in the same way. So they should be the same way here. You're not going to have those big rushes of water like you'd see today during storm events.
I know there's a, there was a discussion about the tree lines. I think it was, I think it's Summer Suite back there. Now we're further back down the street here. But I know that there was one resident in particular who kind of complained about, I won't say complained, but raised some issues with the existing tree line, wanting to make sure those trees are placed. Is that something that the developer, the developer would consider to clear out dead trees? Maybe plant in new? Is that something that you guys could, could do?
Possibly. I mean, we can certainly look at dead tree stock as, as we're working along the edges of these tree lines on the boundaries. I know the north property line was mentioned in particular. As we're doing our clearing efforts, there will be some amount of clearing that occurs inside of our site project. And we could certainly take that into consideration as you're working along those northern property lines, for sure.
Are those, is the tree line, are you intending on keeping that? You're not intending on removing more trees, right?
No, we're only going to remove what we would need for storm water install or say drainage swill installation. You know, talking about this northwest corner, there was some question in regards to the gentleman's property up there and what would happen with the squiggly lines. So the squiggly lines that we see up near his property lead to a rear yard catch basin that is currently being preliminary planned for to collect storm water in that back corner. More importantly, as you get streets and things in, that water is going to get collected in curb catch basins, and there is absolutely going to be less water going to the northwest of this project. It's going to be routed towards our, our storm basins and make its way out from there.
I'm not here to broker any deals or anything, but would there be a consideration to get rid of that sliver up in, I think it's lot 61?
Yeah, that's, that's certainly something that we don't have an intended use for. And as long as that continues to maintain the same course and we don't need it for any of our infrastructure, we could certainly talk to William about that.
If you want to hang on to it, would you be interested or willing to help clear it out or maybe manage it, not manage it, but at least have a discussion about what, what we can do for that sliver property that might help with the water and the trees?
Yeah, I think our development should improve the way the water behaves around this property entirely. But yeah, in regards to who would maintain or accept ownership of that piece of property in the future, we can certainly have that private discussion. If it doesn't benefit us or it isn't needed infrastructure-wise, we certainly wouldn't be against that.
Is there, will there be an HOA for this community?
There will be. And I can appreciate what the residents have said about the HOA that they live in to the north of our project and that it was not maintained or kept alive, and then it went defunct. I can tell you in the HOAs that, that I work inside of and manage, when I get to talk to people and someone expresses that, hey, well, in the future, when the developer leaves, we can eliminate it. My immediate reaction to that is no, and I explained to them why. And it's because there are infrastructure responsibilities, like the detention basin they've mentioned, that all the residents need to maintain because all their storm water go to those, those pieces.
Has there been any discussion about adding restrictive covenants to deeds to not terminate the HOA?
I would have to see how ours currently read, but that certainly is everyone's intent going in, that it's a long-lasting entity that lasts forever and for the duration to take care of the common open spaces. And it's in everyone's best interest as a resident of that particular subdivision, wherever it is, to maintain your open spaces. Whether it has an entry monument or one pond, two ponds, no ponds, keeping the grass mode, keeping the infrastructure healthy promotes property values.
The HOA in phase one, they're still active, I'm assuming. You all, have you turned it over to the residents yet or no?
We have not, no.
Okay. So I wanted to ask about the trash in the neighborhood. That, yeah, we really need to be good neighbors, and that's important. So what is the plan to clean up what's there? And then moving forward, making sure that the neighborhood doesn't get trashy?
Yeah. I understand windblown trash is a problem, and it's a challenge, especially during while residential home construction is going on. I have received feedback from that from city staff. I've passed that along to the Arbor Homes team. And they have a representative here tonight who has received an earful as well. So I think they can be appreciative of the feedback that we've both received and the concerted effort that we need to make moving forward.
One issue that was raised was about kind of the existing construction traffic. Has there been any discussion or is there a possibility to maybe designate a staging area on this second phase extension to maybe alleviate that?
It would certainly be our intent, while this, while the future, what might be phase three inside of our project, proposed project footprint, it would certainly be our intent to not have people parking inside of the existing subdivision that's there today. That whatever we're doing needs to be parked and needs to be occurred inside of the construction that would be going on in the future. In regards to the existing Hunter's Path subdivision, those are certainly conversations that myself and Arbor Homes can have with, with the residents here tonight.
And so I understand about the, the area for children. Will this subdivision have a playground area?
We aren't planning for one now, but there's, there's not a reason we can't put one in. You know, I heard some dissent in regards to what's currently in Hunter's Path, the first piece today. But I can also say that when I'm driving through there and driving by there, I think it sufficiently provides enough playground for the children that I see there typically. And I, I accept the fact that I'm not always there in the evenings, so there's some of that as well. But yes, we can certainly add that to some of our open spaces that we have.
This might be a question for both you and Ellen, but is a streetlight requirement a city requirement or is that a development plan?
It's my understanding the city requires that, that's correct.
Do we have, sorry, do we have any regulations as it relates to? So I think, I think, I think the brand name is Dark Sky is what the approval is. But are there any, I think it's called light, light pollution? Do we have any light pollution requirements in the zoning code?
There are regulations required for lighting within subdivisions. I think Randy is finalizing the vendor. We're working with Spring Hills, but finalizing the design for Main Street and National was all part of the lighting plans that were in place. And there are standards there.
And I'm assuming that there's lighting in the subdivision that's already there, is that correct?
Correct, yep. We installed the fixtures that are the city standard, and Miami Valley Lighting installs those for us. That's correct.
Any other questions? So, I think we'll, so I think we're done with you. You can sit down if you'd like. Is there any other further discussion amongst commission members? I think, you know, if I, if this, you know, were the will of the commission, I would be interested in maybe conditioning approval on the addition of some plans to remove existing dead trees in the tree line and replace or, I guess replace would be the appropriate word, with new planted trees. I know that was a discussion we had on the original Hunter's Path development, at least with one or two lots in particular. I think there's, I think there's already a condition placed on the responses from the zoning administrator that, you know, there'd be construction entrances designated on the plans, which right now I don't think there are, but I think that might help some of the staging area concerns. On the, on the last page? I see, I see. So I'd just kind of run over into that, what is, will be eventually a cul-de-sac, you know, run off of Westbrook into that. Just for clarification, the traffic impact, the traffic impact study will have to come back before city council votes on this. Would anyone like to make a motion? The proposed, so. I would, I'll move to approve with conditions, conditions that I. I would, I'll move to approve with conditions, conditions that I, Plan B added to remove and clear out dead trees along the north property line and replace with new planted trees. I think the same could be said for the west property line. So it'd be moved to approve with the conditions from city staff and with the added condition of removing existing dead trees along the north property line and the east property line replaced with new planted trees on the north property line and east property line. Are there any seconds?
A second.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
So the motion passes, and I think we could move to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting. Second.
Mr. Muncy?
Yes.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.